Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here. This is the December 3rd, 2020 fiscal court meeting. Before we get started, we are going to be led in prayer by Dr. John Absada from the First Christian Church. Dr. Absada, welcome. Thank you so much for being here and starting our meeting off with a prayer.
Thank you. Glad to be with you. Let's pray together. Gracious, loving God, we give you thanks for this day, for every day is a good one. There are always struggles and there are always joys, and yet life is good and fragile, and we grasp it with all of our might. We thank you for these men and women who have dedicated themselves to the work of Franklin County, who are willing to take the criticism and also take the praise when decisions are made, that they struggle with the hard decisions that most of us don't even know exist. We would ask you to give them wisdom and courage in the work that they do, but most of all, give them a sense of cooperation and congeniality so that work can go forward. We live in such a divided time that it is easy for us to dig in our heels and refuse to hear what someone else has to say. We would ask that for this group of magistrates, that that might not be true, but that they might work together in ways that move Franklin County forward into 21, 22, and 25 and beyond. We ask your blessing upon them, and we give you thanks for your good creation and your love for us. As we pray in the name of you who are holy and the one God, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Absada. Thank you so much. We appreciate you, and God bless you for what you do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Could I have a moment of privilege?
You sure may. Absolutely.
I just want to thank the magistrates for the recent gift to the Resource Office of Social Ministry. I am the board chair of that group and obviously know how it works. I've been chair for nine of the last 12 years, and we work really hard to use the money that is given by churches and individuals and the county and the city to help people in need. And the truth is that your recent gift could not have come at a better time because requests for assistance are rising like the rate of COVID. So we appreciate, we really do appreciate your support. Thank you.
We thank you because you're the conduit to get that to the people they need, and we're so appreciative of the work that Rosam does in helping people in our community. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Before we get into our agenda items, I want to say this, that we have three county employees that have unfortunately contacted COVID, and we also have a retired employee that has contacted COVID, and we have 224 active cases in Franklin County along with these. And so our heartfelt sadness goes out to all of those, but our prayers are with you and hope that everyone gets better and makes it through this dreaded disease. And then one other matter that's right here at home with a part of our family is J.W. Blackburn's father-in-law passed away just recently, and his family has gone through quite a bit with the passing of Mr. Penn. So JW, our prayers go to you and your family as well. With that being said, let's go to the first item on the agenda, and that's authorization for approval of minutes from a regular meeting of November the 12th, 2020. Any questions, concerns on the minutes from the November 12th meeting? All right. The next item on the agenda is authorization to approve a resolution in support of addressing the modernization of Kentucky's transportation funding mechanisms to address transportation funding needs throughout the Commonwealth. Now, this is being expressed through the Magistrates Association, through the Judges Association, through the League of Cities, asking elected officials throughout the state to support the legislators to address the gasoline tax. And I'm proud to bring this to us tonight because it will affect Franklin County greatly. There are all kinds of needs. As you know, paving is one, just one piece of it, but redoing roads, redoing the interstate, all of those situations are part of the gasoline tax. And this year, monies were cut, and we cannot continue on providing the best services in Franklin County unless we've got the money to do it. So if there are there any questions, concerns pertaining to this? Squire Tracy, your hand was up first.
Thanks, Judge. A quick question. Would it be possible to attach the request for Shadrack Ferry Road and US 127 North? Would it be possible to attach that to this? I know 127 North has been kicked down the road the last couple project years, and it just got pushed back again. But would it be possible, I know you met with them, we all met with them, if we need to add the accidents that happened?
So I don't think it's appropriate to put this as part of it, but what you're saying can be part of the record. Is that fair enough?
Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I agree with you wholeheartedly on that. As a matter of fact, I talked with Secretary Hancock about it just the other day. Any other questions? That's I think, Squire Sebastian, your hand is up. Sorry.
Yes, thank you, Judge. If our road superintendent is on, I just wanted to talk with them just a little bit because it appears from the abstract that this talks about the loss of funds between 2015 and 2020, I would say fiscal years, and that's a little, you know, north of $215,000. Has that been kind of a gradual loss that we have seen specifically here in Franklin County, or hundreds of thousands of dollars from one fiscal year to the next, which compounds the situation for us? And so that's perhaps one thing that we would maybe like to note, how the situation is compounded for us in not only seeing this this loss specifically in this fiscal year, but other fiscal years prior to that, because that is the loss of, you know, it equates to the loss of paving, repair of bridges, which we have a number of them. We certainly don't want to see issues where we can't get school buses and fire trucks across to neighborhoods and our citizens out in the county. So I'm just bringing that up because what this looks like is this is just a one-time loss of $215,000, and I think it potentially equates to much more than that over the period quoted in this resolution. So I only bring that up for a conversation piece to strengthen the case. Thank you very much.
John Mitchell? John Mitchell, can you, do you have audio? Do you see? Andrew, do you see John?
He's on.
Yeah, he's with us. It looks like he's unmuted. I don't know if he's having some trouble because he's unmuted, and he is here.
Okay. Perhaps he can come back, Squire Sebastian, in a few minutes and give us an update on that, too. All right. Thank you for the question. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's move to the next item on the agenda. This is authorization to approve a resolution providing for additional leave to the Families First Coronavirus Response Act for all county employees effective with pay period beginning November 30th, 2020 and ending December 31st, 2020. I'll take questions, and I've got Betty Jo, too, to talk with some numbers if they're needed. Are there any questions about this extension for this remainder of this month? I would tell you, as you see, we've got three employees that have tested positive, active cases. We've had several that we've had to quarantine through our own Tracy, and it is with deep regret that we've got a lot of issues here in county government that are concerning. And so I thought it was appropriate, number one, for those, for all of our employees, for the safety of our employees in extending this out, because I don't want people coming in here that may have it and may be asymptomatic, feel like they need to come to work, and it's better that they stay home. So I'm recommending this for the safety of our employees. Squire Tracy, you've got a question?
Yes, sir. Just one quick question. You mentioned safety. What is downtown as far as the employees? Obviously, we know the clerk, the sheriff, the jailer are doing great jobs with their facilities being open, but what exactly are we doing downtown and department-wide? What are we doing different today under the red, being under the red or in the red than we were when we were in yellow? What's being done differently?
We've adopted a teleworking program, a different program with the employees. We've worked out a schedule for them to telework. I've asked the employees be in the office. Most, a couple of employees, we allow to go total teleworking because they can. The other employees, we, they have to be in the office at least two days, and they telework the other days. They've worked that out with the department heads here within the office to make sure that their areas are covered.
And you mentioned there was three that tested positive. Any of those three work together?
Yes. Yes, they do.
What about as far as riding in the same vehicles and things of that nature? Is that back to going on, or are we still keeping them separated?
It is not recommended by us that people ride in the same vehicles together.
All right. And of your proposal, what is different than the regular CDC proposal?
Well, this, the CDC is a guideline for quarantining yourself and staying at home. This is a guideline that if you are quarantined, or if you do have COVID, that, and if you've already gone through that process and you use your 80 hours, you've got an extension of another week. And we have several that have used their 80 hours. And so for safety reasons, I believe that it's important that we add another week to it. And it's just through the Christmas holidays here that they would be allowed to do that if they needed to be. Now, if they are already teleworking and can telework, then they don't get this, they don't get this time. Squire Butler?
Thank you, Judge. This virus is a bad, bad deal. We actually had our first employee test positive today, a team worker. But I was surprised that the CDC is now recommending only 10 days out. So he's clear to go back to work on the 14th, I believe. So, you know, I think that's good that they're, you know, learning more about this whole problem. And I do think it's important for our employees, you know, I mean, we have great employees, and I think we've been very fortunate not to have to furlough anybody. No one's hours have been cut, and I hope our employees realize that. I guess where I'm at is, you know, looking at, I think Susan, Squire Sebastian requested some information from Susan as far as our CARES Act money, and it just kind of got me thinking, what about everybody else in our community? You know, what about our citizens who aren't working, who can't afford things, restaurants, things like that? So, you know, I was almost wondering if we could talk a little bit about donating a big chunk of money somehow to, back to our citizens who are struggling. You know, not everybody, you know, some people are fine and still working and not having any problems, but I think it's kind of hitting home to me a little bit as far as the people that, you know, I think like during the prayer, you know, he commented how many people are hurting right now. So I'm just wondering if we can get some of that CARES Act money into the hands of Franklin County citizens and some of these small businesses that are literally going under every day. So I thought maybe we could talk about that also, if that's appropriate. Thank you.
Okay. Now, you do know that the governor has already allocated, I believe, how much is it? $4,000 for, the governor has money appropriated for businesses, the bars and restaurants, specifically for them to apply for. And there's 14 million in the pool, and I don't know how much they get, can apply for, but yesterday's meeting with the governor, only half of the 4,000 that are eligible have requested money so far. So don't know how that would work. And when you say, can we give money? Sure, we can. We've, but we, let's also not forget that we have, we've given 25,000 for utilities to Rosam, which Dr. Absada has talked about. We gave 100,000 to Simon House for needy families. So we have been, we have been given money.
No, I agree, but when you look at that number, 1.5 million, and knowing that there's, you know, a lot of people out of work, and let's just put the businesses aside, let's just talk about the kids and the families and things that aren't making it right now, you know, how can we get that CARES Act money? And that's why I was thinking a voucher system or something like that, you know, as far as, you know, if they just request the money and we give it to them, no questions asked, and they just have to spend it within Franklin County. I would love to be able to look at something like that. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on that or not.
Well, you mentioned a lot of variables there. That would, that'd be a quite a bit of discussion to talk about, just giving money, just free money to people. And we probably ought to have a discussion at another time. So, Squire, I'll set up something next week to, would anybody else like to be part of the discussion? One other magistrate?
I will, Judge.
Okay. Who said that?
I was.
Scotty? Okay, okay.
Hey, Judge, and I can't remember where, I can't recall where I saw that, but I think Midway was doing some sort of voucher system for people over in that area. So that may be a place to look.
Okay. Yeah. Squire Sebastian?
Thank you, Judge. And I think just to follow up on your comments, I think the governor had made 40 million dollars available, and that is available on a first come, first served basis through December 18th. The maximum award for, or the maximum amount that can be awarded for a sole location, single location is $10,000. If a restaurant or bar has multiple locations, it's the maximum amount they can receive is 20,000. So that just adds to the information that you're sharing with the court.
Thank you.
To clarify that, I did have a couple of questions to follow up because I heard on NPR that now the CDC is also discussing contact tracing and quarantining, quarantining specifically from seven to 10 days now. So that has reduced the amount of time for quarantine. You said the HR director is available. I did want to ask a couple of questions about this, because, Judge, you mentioned that there are several of our employees. Do we have any idea how many employees have exhausted the additional leave they received through one of the three federal acts that were mentioned in our abstract? And I think you said our HR director's on, so she might-
Sherry, I'm on.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, I have a report. So far, we've got 12 employees. This is countywide. That's exhausted their leave. And also, I want to, you all to realize that there's five ways to use the COVID leave, not just because of one reason. There's five reasons. So some may ask, you know, how have they exhausted their leave of 80 hours? Well, it could have been they had childcare issues. It could have been a local isolation. It could have been taking care of a family member, or it could have been themselves. So there's five different reasons to take COVID leave. So that's one reason, because I have several employees at the jail that had, they was positive, and then their family member came down, so they ended up missing about three, four weeks of time on that. Also, I want to give you all a figure to date of how much we have spent on COVID leave. It's 49,27114. That's the total amount that we have paid for the COVID leave.
That's salaries, Betty, right, and to for-
Correct.
On COVID? Okay.
Correct. So to follow up, and thank you for that information. Does that mean that they, these employees, they still have sick leave balances, or they've exhausted absolutely everything? That's what, that was my question. I'm sorry.
We have some employees that had a balance of sick time leave that they did use. Unfortunately, the newer employees, and that's the one that it's hitting, and it's really hitting the jail, okay, is they don't have a leave balance because they only get 7.5 hours a month. So some of these employees only have about 15 or 20 hours to use a sick time. And it's really hurting the newer employees, people that's been there over 30 days. And I've seen the burden hit the jail pretty hard on that.
Sure. Thank you. So there were, in the abstract, we saw three different federal acts that were listed in this. So the question is, what distinguishes these three different acts from each other? Is there something that says, like, the, one of them is called the emergency, what, past sick leave act? There's two others. So are we supposed to, in a tiered way, utilize maybe hours that come from one, in a tiered basis, use one first, use another second? I'm just trying to understand the distinctions between these three acts that are mentioned in our abstracts.
Yes, I understand. That's a good question. There's three different codes that we have to use in our pay corps system. One would be the employee code, and that is the 80 hours for the employee. That's one act, okay, where the employee has to be quarantined. The second act is the Childcare Act, where the employee receives two-thirds of their pay. The third is for the employee family leave, to where they receive up to 80 hours of leave time. And those are the three acts. And those are the three codes that we actually have in our pay corps system.
So Betty, when you say that the childcare, that means that if they, they cannot, if they've lost their childcare, then we have to give them that time?
Yes, when the child, when it's closed, where it was closed in March, April, and May, I believe, their daycare was closed. So some of those employees couldn't come to work because they didn't have daycare. So that is one of the acts, and they receive two-thirds of their pay. The rest of their pay, they have been sensitizing using their sick leave or vacation if they have it. But to answer Sherry's question-
What about the family? Explain the family.
The family, they get up to 80 hours taking care of the family member. Anything after that, they would have to use their time. And that's one reason we was requesting an extra week, because there's been a couple instances, like I said, with the family, childcare, or themselves. In March, too, I wanted to remind the court that the city adopted this on March 23rd. They added that additional week. They went on and put it in three weeks, and we discussed it. And I told the judge that I would let him know when our employees was getting to the point to where we might want to present this to court, to add that additional leave. I contacted the judge a couple weeks ago, and I asked him, I believe, this is time to take it to court because we have employees that's hurting because they don't have the time to cover because of COVID. So I went to the judge, and I explained to him the situation, and I asked him to take this back to court to review and see if we can add the additional week, only to extend to December 31st, just like the federal.
So I just have, I have another question. The abstract, it notes that recovery funds, and Betty Jo, you had mentioned a specific amount that had been used. Do we have to be reimbursed for that later on and provide, like, time sheet documentation to someone in the federal government? Or how does that portion, provision kick in for the county?
Yes, I have been working with Ann Northcut on that, and Ann Northcut can provide information. She's the one that said we can recover refunds. Ann, are you on?
Yes, I'm on that, Betty. What I've said was recovered funds. So the CARES funds that we've recovered would be what we'd be using for this. The only, I've been working with KYEM and FEMA, and actually had a conversation with them this afternoon. I've really been pushing, they don't cover COVID leave, but I've really been pushing for them to consider helping us with, for example, when the fire department has had to pay overtime to backfill stations so they have enough staff on hand, and they're thinking that they will consider that. I just heard that today. Up to today, they were saying no. So it's been a real back and forth, and I'll keep working on that. Yet, but yes, for the COVID leave, they would be using recovered funds from the CARES money that we received.
And yes, we do have to supply documentation, Sherry. We have a separate leave COVID time that we created. So we have to supply the leave slip along with their time sheet and the reason for the, they have to check what reason why they're being quarantined. And we have to, we've been, payroll, Vicky has been submitting those to Ann every two weeks when we do payroll so we can keep up with the paperwork.
So does, by discussing this today, this is going to add an extra week of leave to every county employee, or will it only add that extra week to those who've exhausted their leave? I just, I may be missing something in the abstract. I just want to make sure I understand that part of it.
Well, you could say both of those are true, because any employee that applies for it, that qualifies and applies for it, then they will get up to 120 hours as opposed to 80, to, up to December 31st. And if you've already exhausted, then you would be part of that, and you would get that extra. In other words, you would be able to get another week if you've already exhausted.
Correct, Judge. Also, for an example, we have an employee, unfortunately, was hospitalized because of this. So he's going to be out for about four weeks. So he would use two weeks of COVID time, and hopefully he would have two weeks of sick time to cover the rest.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Other questions? Squire Tracy?
Just another question for Betty Jo. Betty Jo, you mentioned that 49, a little over 49,000 had been paid for exhausted leave. Can you give me the dates on that, when that actually started to, and I guess that's through 11:30? Is that accurate?
The last payroll, yes. That would have been the last paid, that would have been that last payroll date.
And when did it start?
When the federal, March- Um, when the federal March. Seventeenth. When the cares, when they, when they, when the federal granted the leave. In middle of March, I don't have the exact date, Scotty, I think it was the seventeenth.
Okay, so. Obviously, if, if you looked at it, the trend, forty-nine thousand over eight months. So you're looking at about six thousand dollars if. If it stayed true, um. I guess my, my question is, is, um. Let's say I'm a county, you know, county employee, come to work. But I wake up one morning and I have a cough, I, I feel like I got a symptom. I, can I call in that week with that cough, or do I have to go get tested, or? What, what's the, I guess my question, what's the protocol?
If they have symptoms, we are asking the employee not to come into work, to call us. And to monitor their symptoms. And if they have symptoms, we are requiring them to go get tested. Because we want to make sure, you know, we, we, so yes, if, if I call in and say, hey, Judge, I've got a cough this morning. Um, I'm not feeling well, okay, stay home, don't come in the office. Um, but you need to get tested, you need to get registered and get tested.
Okay, so that goes to my next question, so. What if I don't go get tested, can I call in five straight days? And just say I got a cough, or now I got a headache, or now I got a sore throat, or is getting tested? Part of the, the, the hours per se that you're, that you're getting?
Getting tested, or? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm saying it's the documentation that, that kicks in the COVID.
Correct.
Monies. In other words, you can't just call in and say, and not use your sick days, that's what you're alluding to, no, you can't do that. You, you have.
You're right, that's.
You have to have, at some point, you have to have documentation that this is or isn't. Uh, COVID.
Correct, and, and the documentation would either be from the health department, their physician. Basically, a doctor's note, they supply me that they want that they, they, the employees should stay home because they have symptoms.
Right. Betty Jo, quick question, another, another quick question. Um, you mentioned the jail has been, has been affected by this. How has the other two, uh, offices that are open daily? How have they been affected, how's the sheriff's office, how is? The clerk's office dealing with people, I can't imagine how much traffic the, the sheriff's office and the, and clerk have had the last thirty, forty days, um. How, how have they been affected by this?
Are you saying, are you asking how many employees has been affected by it?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the sheriff's office, they've had employees that's been affected and they have, uh, exhausted their eighty hours. And, uh, most of those employees had leave time. Um, there was a situation at the clerk's office. Um, they exhausted their leave and the clerks, they, they paid those employees. So they, they paid them.
They had an outbreak of two positive cases, I think, is two. They had their whole staff, uh, tested to make sure that, uh, everyone was okay. And they quarantined those two people and any, and several others that were around those two people as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Next item is, uh. Uh, first reading of amendment number two to ordinance number two. Twenty twenty relating to the budget, Ms. Susan, welcome, Ms. Susan.
Hello, good evening, Court. The, um. The amendment covers three different funds, the general fund, the. Federal fund and the capital fund. I have. Compiled these, um. Over time, obviously, they've accumulated since the beginning of the year. And as we approach our, our mid-year report. It, it's more than appropriate that we go ahead and, and get this structured in our budget. And our budget documents to present, you know, for information. And basically, um. To. Get on the books, some of this activity that's already happened, and then, and again, all, all of this. An extraordinary and unusual activity that continues to happen. So, uh, starting from the top. We are, uh, with the general fund. We are amending in the, uh, donation that, uh, the county clerk obtained. And, and the full amount, and, and in fact, that money has been received and is in the bank. And then the, uh, the next item, the public properties corporation bond was refinanced. Earlier in the year and it provided a, a savings which, uh, which we were able to, uh, bank and we are. Basically will be budgeting and reporting that information as amounts received. In the general, or in the federal fund, the cares grant is the biggest portion. And what I'm representing here is the full amount of the award. Uh, based on our memorandum of understanding with the state that shows the full amount. Uh, along with the separate cares money through the HAVA, through the Help America Vote Act that. That the clerk's offices, uh, received and then passed on to the fiscal court, uh, through the state board of elections. And then. Uh, just as a point of explanation and it ties in with the capital fund, the, um, a portion of that. The, uh, re- recovered funds for the cares money has already been committed. For the rehabilitation, renovation of our building at two thirty-one East Main, and when we do that project, that will be booked. Under the capital fund, so that shows as a. As a negative amount, that's why it shows as a negative amount, because it's a transfer out to be expensed in another fund. And then the, uh, the capital fund itself for the, the additional revenues received. The resolution commitment from the city of Frankfurt. And then we. Uh, have our final bond documents on the, uh, on the borrowed funds for the. Fire truck and the energy project. So this, uh, represents, because we already bought, because we've already budgeted. The fire truck, the only amount that we are, uh, budgeting here is the, uh, the energy project itself. Within the capital fund. And then it shows the receipt of that transfer, uh. Uh, from our own obligation for county funds for the, uh, East Main project. Excuse me. Each one of these has, um, uh. Offsetting. Expenditures because we show them, you know, we have a balanced budget, so on one side we show the revenue, we show an expense. And I want to make it clear that. These are not actual expenditures and most cases, it's just an equal representation. Of the exact same amount of the funds. That basically discloses the full amount of the awards and the full amount of the grants and, uh. Gives a transparent picture to the public. Through our own financial documents of the kinds of events that are taking place with our budget this year.
Okay, questions? Squire Booth?
I was wondering. Whether we should, uh. Share screen. Uh, so the public can see. The amounts that treasurer is talking about. Uh, receipts and what are expenditures?
Let, let's see, um, Susan, can you, can you share a screen? Andrew, can you share a screen?
Uh, Susan should be able to.
I didn't, um. Andrew, do you have the document available?
No ma'am, I don't.
Sorry, we're not going to be able to share this one, but we'll do that from here on, do the best we can to have.
Yeah, I, I apologize that I don't have that readily available, I could dig it up, but it would take me a couple of minutes to, to get it. Up onto the screen. Uh, we will have to have a second reading of this, uh, because it's an ordinance, so Squire Booth certainly. Uh, at the second reading, we will have that, I will be prepared to share the screen on that.
Okay. Um. All right, uh, any other questions on Squire Muller, sorry?
Thank you, Judge, no, you're fine, hey Susan, uh, thanks for being with us again, um. How, you know, last meeting, I, I think you surprised me a little bit because you, uh, you felt good about where we were, I think financially. Um, are you still, uh, still feeling good about? Our current financial situation with everything going on?
Well. First of all, I want to certainly acknowledge and recu- recognize that there are a lot of people hurting. They're hurting emotionally, they're hurting physically, they're hurting financially. This is the probably the most stressful time that I, it's been in my life time, so. I appreciate the, the concerns that everyone has and the uncertainties. Um. Every single day, uh, and in many cases, in many households. It's, it's, um, it's very dire and drastic, so I, I mean, I. I just don't how, I don't know how to, uh, I. I don't know how to connect with all those who are hurting, but I know in our, in our own. Population of our employees' population, I know some stories and it's, it's very difficult and. Finding childcare is very difficult and costly when you can find it. And having two working households, uh, is. Um, certainly a, a challenge when it, when it's working, much less when someone else is staying home and. And doing zooming with their kids for. Uh, their classrooms and then trying to work from home as well. And we have some employees that are doing that and they're doing a great job with it and I'm. Um, I'm really happy about that. As far as the, um, as our. Government structure and our, our, our jurisdiction goes, Franklin County Fiscal Court. Has always had a group of leaders, you all being a group, part of that group. Of being very responsible with, uh, with using the money in a conservative way. And, and always having a very. I think fair approach to. Uh, committing dollars, uh, either with a strategy. So. Because of the preparation and the position we were in in advance with a, uh, with some reserve. Uh, that has. You know, that has helped us weather through a lot of this. Um, uncertainty and given us a cash position to be able to handle the uncertainty. Until the time when the, the federal money came through, so that has certainly helped. However, the county has. In order to have that kind of reserve, has put off, like every other county and like our entire country, has put off infrastructure investments. And that postponement of major infrastructure inva- investment, investments as Squire Sebastian has, uh, has alluded to, has. Uh, is. It is, is, is definitely, uh, creates, it compounds the problems. Um, I was in a training, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and I think it was the Callaway County Judge who, who said. And I, and he was, he was right on, it's, it's better to, better to keep up than to catch up. And that is so true on so many levels. And trying to catch up is just, it just does not. It just, it's, it's, it's not, it's not a good plan. So we have a lot of catching up to do in Franklin County with, I mean, you talk about roads, you talk about bridges. You can, and, and, and not even get past there, you can talk about facility, infrastructure. Investments that we, we were, we were well on our way. To cut, to try to come up with a strategic planning to cover those issues and. Um, have, we've put those on, I have postponed those, you know, to see, to see where we stand. So all, uh, all of that being said, we have a lot of challenges, but we are still. In a very, um, I think, um, a very good position, uh, with the assistance that we've received from the state. And with the, um. Bec- and basically because of some of the choices we made and, and held off on some of the things. That we are in a, we, the, the fiscal court and the county jurisdiction locally is, has, um. Is strong enough to continue the level of services without interruption for, for our, our safety. And, and protection for, you know, for all the citizens, so. I don't know if that. Covers what your concern is, but, um. The, um. It's day by day still for everyone.
I, I, I appreciate all your kind words. Uh, I just, I don't feel you're as excited as you were during last meeting.
Well, I just want to temper that with, uh, you know, it's. It's the, it's the, it's. It is the, the county's money and it's not. Just, you know, the people sitting at the fiscal court tables money, it's the taxpayers' money. And their input and their representation with the, with the projects that are taking place and the use of those funds, so. Uh, we've been very fortunate, we were very fortunate to get that donation. Uh, that, um, that the county clerk secured, that is, you know, that is fantastic to be able to get that. We, uh, you know. Are, uh, we're in the capital county and. Well, again, I've, I've mentioned before, we have a good mix of, of businesses. We're not. As dependent as the, as the city jurisdictions are on just one source of, you know, uh, uh, maybe payroll. Uh, we have a, a really good, we have a good mix with the distilleries here and, and our manufacturers, so. Uh, we, you know, we, we're benefiting from that and, um, quite frankly, the, the fact that. That we have that and we're still here and, uh, with, you know, with the city. We're able to work as a community and not just, you know, draw territorial lines, we can still do things together cooperatively. That really works well, I think, for, you know, for the whole community.
Susan, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Squire, Susan, you want to talk about the treasures report?
As always, I send out a report. Be available to you when you receive your packet, and as always, everything has changed. Uh, yes, uh, Court, the numbers are always changing, it's very fluid. Um, and will continue to be fluid. I already reported that we did receive. Uh, the grant money for, for the, um. For the election equipment, as well as we've received the, um, second dispersment of the cares funds. Which puts us nearly whole, um, on that award. Um. I have not had a lot of time for much other analysis, I do know that. I don't know what the sheriff's going to report on, on tax collections, but, uh. We, they turn over that money, uh, on the tenth of the month following the month of collection, uh. So we should have our first real property tax receipts, uh, by the next. By the next court report to, to see, excuse me, where we stand on. On, on our budget for real property taxes, so. Uh, we will, we'll have those funds available as far as. Other areas. Of, of, um, revenue, I am, I think everything else is, is, um. Uh, I don't have any real comments, uh, there that stand out. We will do be, I'll be doing a lot of reorganizing of, of some of these, uh. Booking some of this information now that, now that we get, once we get this amendment in place with the federal money. Uh, I'll say again. The com- the directions and, and compliance documentation, um, for, for the administration of, of. Of this disaster, just, it lags, you know, they come out with. With the program, but then getting the, uh, audit guidance and the administrative guidance, it lags, so some of this we're doing. You know, on the back end, so we have to do some cleanup, but the most important thing is always is to try to. Have a, um, have an open, transparent representation in our financial report of all the activity that, that takes place and that's. It, sometimes it can be confusing following it around, but, um. We, we just try to get it out there and get it in the, in the, in the right category for information as well as our regulatory agency.
Okay, thank you, Susan, any other questions? Okay, uh, let's go to the next item, which is payment of claims, uh.
Judge.
Ms. Sue. Sue, I'm sorry. Squire Booth?
I did not realize until I looked at this budget that the PVA gets funds from the fiscal court. I thought they had their own revenue. I guess I'm wrong, right?
We have a line item for about, I think it's $100,000. Is that what you're referring to, Squire Booth?
Yeah.
That it's based on our tax assessment. So it's for them to basically provide our assessment values each year. It's not, it's, it's a flat amount based on whatever our tax assessment is. So I think it's 100,000.
But that's only part of their money. The other part comes from the state.
That's correct.
All right. Any other questions? Pay, the payment of?
Squire Sebastian has a question.
Oh, Squire Sebastian, sorry.
Sorry, Judge. I thought we were in payment of claims. So I'll.
No, we are. I'm trying to get there. So if you got your questions about that, you're right on. Go ahead, Squire. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Thank you. In reviewing the material here, and this may be a question for our IT coordinator, when might the court expect their new business cards? I noticed there was a charge on here for one set of business cards. And I had inquired with Andrew when the email conversion happened, when that may be. So I'm just, just following up on that because I noticed that in the bills. But I do have an additional question after that.
Those are actually ordered by our accounts payable administrator. She serves as our purchase agent. And so we're working on a list of those who will need new business cards and working with the vendor to get those ordered. So, yeah.
Okay, so that, that does include the court. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I had spoken to the IT coordinator when we were talking about the email conversion and I mentioned that at that time. So I just wanted to make sure it matriculated to the appropriate place. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I also noticed in here, there was a charge for the TIF attorney. Can someone, or when will the court maybe be briefed on the activities in regard to work with the?
Do they get that bill that he sends?
They don't see the actual invoice. So the invoice is processed in the system and what the magistrate sees is just what's the detail that's on here.
Okay, so they don't get that letter that he sends on the time he spent?
No.
Well, I get the, his invoice on time and what he spent, and most of it was contacting and copying. So I will say this to give you as best update as I can in my talks with Tommy Russell and his, and the city's leading on this, that the goal was to try to get all of us together before Christmas, but I don't believe that's going to happen. I believe it's going to be under the, with the new city commission in early part of January. His bills are just, and Council, Council Sparks can, Council Sparks can kind of give us a typical billing, but his are usually is copying this, talking to somebody about that, investigating X, Y, and Z. So, but remember, his bills up to, splitting up to 25,000, I think it is, isn't it, Amber?
Yes.
Yeah. So, Mr. Sparks, can you kind of address those types of billings for lawyers? Can't hear you, Mr. Sparks.
No, sir, Judge. I regret, I haven't been privy to, or nor have I received any billing statements, updates, et cetera, for a couple of months on those. So I would never, it would, they'd drum me out of the bar if I talked about another lawyer's billing. I have no idea. But I'm assuming that they're reasonable and valid, but I've never been privy to those. So I can't speak to what the nature and degree of what's going on behind the scenes are.
Sure. And I appreciate that. I've worked with attorneys. I appreciate that. I just wanted to check because the court hasn't been briefed in regard to the TIF in quite some time. And there was a charge in the bill. So I just didn't know if there would be a report forthcoming to the court in regard to what may be happening with other individuals on the TIF. So that was the reason for the question.
I'll, I'm going to go two ways with you. One, answer your question. What, there has not been anything other than the initial discussion by, to the library, by the city and myself, and to the Health Department Board, by the city and myself. Now, to answer any of your other questions about where the TIF is and moving forward, Tommy Russell's on the line, and I'll bring him up and let you ask him those questions because he's had more work with the, with the TIF development than myself, because that's the way we had arranged that the city would do that. Mr. Russell, are you available?
Yes, sir, Judge. Thank you.
Yeah. Can you give the court an update?
Yes, sir. The development agreement, which was the initial, the whole project and what the scope of the project was, is pretty much finalized. We have just gotten a participation agreement in the last, oh, I would say, two weeks or something like that. We are waiting for some numbers to come in from the developer as far as estimates on the TIF, estimates on the project, things of that nature. So we can put some numbers to the participation agreement, which is where we will have to come in and make, you all will have to make decisions between whatever entities are going to join in the TIF project. So as far as that goes. So I didn't really want to fire it out there until we had some numbers because I know everybody's going to ask the same thing. Well, what is, what's the number we're looking at and what's the percentage we want to do? So I am just waiting on that, that information. That said, I do have a meeting with the developer sometime, I don't remember the exact date, and I'm anticipating those numbers getting to us soon. And as soon as I get those, you and I will go over them, and then we can share them with the court. And I plan to update just as soon as I can, because I know the numbers is what everybody's going to look at on that.
Tommy, am I, am I correct? In a prior conversation, you were, you were thinking that it would be January, early January, when we would get all of that together and be making some final decisions on where to move forward to. Is that correct?
It probably will be now, Judge, with, we've had some pushback and things of that nature. You were right originally, we're trying to get it scheduled in. And it might happen, but with the long holidays at Christmas time now, and that, that whole week off, I don't know that that'll happen. But just like I say, I didn't want to bring it until we got some preliminary numbers because I know everybody's going to ask, you know, what's the share? What's the number? How much is this going to cost? How much TIF monies are we looking at? Things of that nature. I am just waiting for their economic development person to give me those numbers. And I did send him an email, maybe Monday or Friday of last week, asking for those again.
Okay. Squire Sebastian, you have any other questions?
I do. But I'm going to move on from the TIF. I noticed that there were two charges for network monitoring in the IT section. Since we have IT staff, have we considered investing in SolarWinds or some other software directly off the shelf that does that network monitoring for us, so that we have our finger on the pulse of those things straight away?
That, that's actually like a software fee that we pay through McAllen for, it's a software fee that, and we do get those. It's not like a, you know, it's a software fee. That it's like SolarWinds, where we can get monitoring, you know, get emails, get the texts when something's going wrong.
But, but we don't have, we don't do that ourselves. Some outside third-party vendor does that for us. Is that right?
I wouldn't necessarily put it that way. That's, that fee is for, for our software. That, that is like our, the equivalent of our SolarWinds. That's, that's a software fee. That's not for them to, you know, actually monitor it, although they do, they see it as well as I see it. You know, they have access to see it, but as well as I do. But that fee is not for them to do it, it's for the software.
So we're paying a vendor and not working directly with the, the company that has, I'm just using SolarWinds. It can be a variety of things. I'm just more familiar with SolarWinds.
We're paying them for, for that software.
We do that for several services, Squire Sebastian. We do that for the log me in. Our vendor, McAllen, is able to sometimes get better pricing than we can. Also, just due to when subscriptions are due, McAllen will bill us for it. They will pay for it upfront and bill us. They do that on our behalf. It's not paying them to actually monitor the service, it's for that service.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We dropped, we went from, so, the, we went from looking at monies for TIF to SolarWinds pretty quick. Was there any other questions for Tommy Russell concerning the TIF? Squire Tracy?
Judge, sorry. Question for you. I didn't catch what you, what you said in regards to speaking to the Health Department and the Library Board. Did you, can you repeat that?
Yeah. I just, since they're the, 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 the largest entities other than government taxing bases, I went to the Health Department and the Library Board, and along with the city, to talk about the process and telling them, just kind of explaining what a TIF is, and not make, not asking them to make any commitment yet, but that we would come back with them when, when the final mark is made and the amount that is needed, and come back to them and have, and then let them decide whether they wanted to participate or not.
Were they optimistic, Judge?
I, I think they listened to us. I think what, the most important thing is my presentation along with the city was, is, is to help understand, help them understand what a TIF is, because most people really don't know what a tax increment financing is. And so I think that was the reason I wanted to be out front with them. And, yeah, they're, I'm not, am I saying they're going to go with it? I don't, I can't say that. But I'm saying that they listen and they, and they, they were fine with us coming back and asking.
I didn't know how the Health Department, I mean, what's it been, two years? The pension cost, I guess, is, was a huge concern with the Health Department. I didn't know where they would be on it. I know that the Library Board's, from my understanding, does pretty well, the Library. I didn't know. So.
Fortunately, right now, for the Health Department, the last legislative session froze.
Right.
Pension payments. Now, who knows what's going to happen?
Right.
This year. But they froze it for one year. So that, that sure helped quite a bit for them.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions on the, Squire Blackburn? Sorry.
Since we're still on paying the bills, I noticed in the litter grant program, we've gotten 60 miles of roads cleaned up. I just wanted to get an update from Brittany and find out what roads they were and let the community know what, what groups benefited from it and helped our county get cleaned up a little.
Yeah. Okay. Brittany, are you on?
She is.
Okay, Brittany, you want to follow up on that for Squire Blackburn?
Yeah. I apologize. I don't have it pulled up. But give me just a minute. Also trying to get to a quiet space that y'all can hear me because the baby's sitting in your plane.
We're, we're used, with Tamara and her baby, baby, and you and Louisa, that's fine. We're used to it around here.
All right. Give me just a second.
Hey, Brittany, I can, I can comment on some of that because I've helped a couple of groups.
Yeah.
With their work. I know out in Squire Tracy's area, you know, we started out in the Harvey Land Road, we walked down the Shadrack Ferry to the end. And there were multiple groups that actually participated in that one. That was actually the South Frankfurt Neighborhood Association. They walked Old Owentown Road as well. And so there were a host of miles there that were picked up. I also worked with Western Hills FFA Group, and a tremendous amount of students turned out for that. So it was really exciting. It wasn't just the adults in that group. So it was fantastic to see, there were probably 30 kids that turned out to participate in that. And then I worked with Farmdale Baptist Church out actually in, in the first district. And they covered Green Wilson, Wash Road, Twilight Trail, Nineveh, trying to think if they did some on Lawrenceburg Road. So there were quite a few miles that they covered out, out this way as well. And I think everybody was trying to take advantage of those beautiful November 60-degree weather days, which were, were fantastic to go out there because it's sure been cold this last week to try to do it.
Brittany, do you have any other?
I, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for, for sharing, Squire Sebastian. So we have had, we've had the Lady Flyers Basketball Boosters Club, the Toteville Virgin Club, as she mentions, the South Frankfurt Neighborhood Association, Frankfurt Youth Football League, Western Hills FFA Chapter, Farmdale Baptist Church, Franklin County Women and Family Shelter, and Capital City Crush, which was a group of nine-year-olds, a girl's softball traveling team. And they, they crushed it. They had tons of fun doing it. So they shared quite a few photos, which will, I'll get up on a, on our website tomorrow. As far as roads, let's see, we've pretty much been all over the county. I still have, I have three, three different groups going out from Frankfurt schools this weekend. And then I have an additional six, six other groups signed up. So I have nine more cleanups to complete in the next four weeks.
That's awesome, Brittany. Have, have any of them utilized the, the phone app to show location and, and what's been done?
So we have, I've, I've put it in our packet, the packet that they all get when they pick up equipment, that, you know, they really should fill that out. Most have. But I'm still waiting on Bluegrass Green Source. They are the ones who actually host that map. And I believe they have to approve all of the postings to go on. So with, you know, not having everybody in the office, and I don't know exactly who manages it anymore because they have a lot of interns. So, but I've been in contact with them and I'll reach out again and see if they can approve those fields.
That's awesome, Brittany. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Squire Tracy, go ahead, and I'll make my statement after then.
Thanks, Judge. Just another question for Brittany. Brittany, how effective has the recycle bin, bin that's located over by, or located over by the Fire Station and Sheriff's Office? How's it going there?
It's going fairly well. Billy Joe and I, you know, regularly are in contact discussing how it is. He checks it quite often. And we rarely really see any, anything that shouldn't be in there. I went up there on Sunday, actually, to empty our home bin. And there were a couple cardboard boxes which shouldn't be in there. And there was another, like one or two other items that I could see with it being about half full. So just want to remind everybody that, that container and the one down on Rouse Avenue for paper, those are only for newspaper, magazines, catalogs, junk mail, and office paper. So corrugated cardboard can go in your curbside bin. And Lexington is making some changes at the moment. So we may be able to actually recycle a bit more here shortly.
Thank you.
Brittany, I want you to know that the Wells family may be unique. Brittany, I want you to know that the Wells family may be, uh, unique because we still love the newspaper. We don't, uh, we do, we are able to get the E edition of, of the newspapers, but we get three newspapers a day. And, uh, well, let's say that when they're delivered. And, and when they're printed. But anyway, uh, uh, we go quite often, about every week and a half to two weeks. And, um, every time I go, it's, it's virtually full. I mean, it's right there. So I, I think Squire Tracy's question is, uh, is appropriate. And I, I believe the community is doing a good job of, of using it, utilizing that, uh, uh, container. Now, would you like to talk about what, uh, what's in store for us, what you've applied for in a grant?
Sure. So in the, um, in the grants that I brought before you all, um, back in early spring, uh, in the recycle grant, we had put in for an actual, um, piece of equipment. We put in for our own recycling trailer. Um, so right now we are paying Central Kentucky Hauling about $277 every time that bin needs to go and be emptied. Um, granted, we are seeing a little bit on, on the other side where, um, the paper we bring in that is clean, you know, comes, comes towards us in, in the revenue side. Um, even, even though most months are a deficit, um, it's kind of helping with that. Um, but this, this trailer, what we are gonna be using it for is we're gonna swap that out. So we're gonna have our own piece of equipment. Um, it is small enough that it can hook up to, um, the truck that Billy Joe already drives. And it would only take about two hours of his time every six weeks or so. So, um, and I've already contacted, um, the Lexington Material Recovery Facility and they, they are on board. They are totally fine with us bringing our own. Um, and we're hoping to, to proceed with that and we'll have, uh, it'll be, it'll be a green trailer and have, um, a wrap on it that actually shows like Franklin County's logo, the Solid Waste logo, and it'll be a little bit better of a situation and not just a big black trailer.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Squire Muller, you had a question?
Yes Judge, and it's for you, not, not Brittany. Going back before we get into voting section, uh, on number four, you made a comment, is, it's just through Christmas, the end of the year. Um, is that what we're voting on?
Yep. Well, it can't, the, uh, unless the federal government extends it, uh, the, the COVID, uh, Relief of Funding or Act, uh, to help those, to help employees expires December 31st.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Now, I'm looking for them to extend it, but that, but that's, will be another situation. Okay, Brittany, first of all, I want to say thank you and, um, uh, I'm, now my talk is to the community. And Brittany, you can back this up that, um, quite often I will come in Brittany's office and say, Brittany, Thornhill Bypass is pathetic. It needs to be picked up. If you drive Thornhill Bypass, uh, um, the other day it was horrible. Brittany has put people out on, out there to clean it up. And, um, also she's called the state, so it's not just the, uh, uh, groups that are out there. State is out there. Our, uh, um, our jail has been out when it can to help. Um, and so has, uh, Billy Joe been out there. But, uh, I want to say this to, to all, to all that are watching, that, uh, there's no excuse in littering. There's absolutely no excuse in it. So it should stop and we should, and we should take pride in our community. Don't litter. Um, some people are just dropping bags of trash. And those bags of trash are being opened up by animals. And then a bag of trash on the side of the road has now become thousands of pieces of trash on the side of the road. No excuse in it. So take pride in our community and please stop littering. And that will help all of us and make, make our community better. So with that being said.
Um, Judge, if I could, oh, sorry, if I could just add one thing. Um, on the Solid Waste page on the county's website, um, so it's FranklinCounty.KY.gov slash, uh, solid-waste-management. Um, I have recently created a new litter reporting system. So we had, um, and we still do, we have a phone call that people can call, um, and it transcribes messages to me. But, um, I created an actual form that if you see a road that's really bad or, you know, you think you found a small open dump or, you know, anything else related to littering, there is a Google form linked on the website. You just click on it and fill out the information that you want to report and I'll see it that way.
Great, Brittany, thank you. Thanks. Any other questions? Okay, let's move on. Is there any other business, other business? Uh, Squire Tracy, you were first.
Thanks Judge. Couple of questions. And the first one, I'm not sure if it would go to Susan or maybe the, the city manager. Uh, it's in regards to medical transports. Is the city tracking emergency medical transports related to COVID-19 separately?
You probably ought to ask is the city and the county doing that?
Well, I know that the city's the one that's running the, the, they're the ones, it's the buses and they're the ones that keep track of the runs. That's why I'm, that's where I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm talking about their ambulance. Their ambulance runs, are they tracking those that are related to COVID? Are they tracking those differently than they have in the past?
There's, there's Tommy. Thank you, Tommy, for being, still being on.
Yes, sir. I will, I will have to ask Chief Briscoe if that is, if that specific nature of the run is being tracked, Squire Tracy. And then I will send it to you all tomorrow. I'll find that out tomorrow and, and get that information to you. Is there some other bit of information you're looking for other than that on those runs?
Well, obviously, I guess when the invoice comes to, uh, to our treasurer, if it was a, a, a transport related to COVID-19, I would hope it would reflect that where she can get that information where it needs to go to get, um, reimbursed per se.
And I think, uh, I think Chief Briscoe and Ms. Lawrenson had a conversation about how to break those runs out and that amount, those amount of money. So, so you weren't, so we weren't billing twice per se or, or so everybody was able to recover their portion. I know we've had a conversation once, but I'll ask that again, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Squire Sebastian?
Uh, thank you Judge. I, I was going, uh, to the supplemental bills. We, we skipped over that from regular bills. So I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about that. And I, I had a question similar to Squire Tracy, so I appreciate him asking that tonight. Um, uh, under, uh, the supplemental bills on page two, there's a, uh, a notation under professional services. I'm looking at that here. Uh, it's, uh, count 01-9100-332. And it is a, uh, bill to Dinsmore and Stoll. Uh, and it is for State Journal versus Rogers. Who, who can, I guess, share some, uh, information with the court about the nature of what that expense is?
I can share. Recall, or Squire, recall that we talked about that in closed session the last time about that matter pending before the Franklin Circuit Court. That was the, uh, appeal on the open records denial, uh, that was affirmed by the Attorney General but overruled and overturned for separate grounds by the Circuit Court. And by statute, they get attorney fees. So that's the, that's the negotiated bill.
All right, thank you. I just, I just, sure, because we, we talked about a number of things in closed session. So I just had to ask that.
Yeah, that one, we finally wrapped that up in full. That one put behind us.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
I have one other, um, and this may be a question, uh, for our jailer, uh, if he is on.
I don't think he is, Squire Sebastian.
Okay, well, who then can talk to the court about the commissary fund? Um, because at, at numerous trainings that we have been in attendance of over the past years, there have been, uh, sessions led by representatives of the Jailers Association. And then we have been told at several points that the commissary funds are to be used for the benefit of the inmate. So in the court bills today, I see one, uh, and it's on page one of the jail fund supplemental court bills. Uh, and it is for mattress covers and sheets. Now, I'm gonna presume that that is for the benefit of the inmates. And so my question is, is that something that should be paid out of the commissary fund and not included in with the bills at the fiscal court?
Would you like to email that question to, uh, Janet Urbana and ask him that specifically?
I most certainly can, but I, I'm probably not gonna vote to approve the bills if we can't get this question answered.
Uh, I'm sorry, I can't. I, if you don't approve the bills, then, I'm sorry.
So there is no vote to approve the bills. There would only be a motion to deny a specific bill and it would have to be for a good cause. The good cause would be that the quantity was not received. Um, there was a billing error, but if you receive the product, then the county is required to pay within 30 days of receipt of the bill.
So can we note something that if this is, is something to be paid out of the commissary, that the general fund could be paid back? This amount?
Once again, why don't you send an email to, uh, Janet Urbana and ask that question if you could do that?
Sure, I, I absolutely will. Thank you.
You're welcome. Squire, Squire Tracy?
Thanks Judge. Just a couple more questions. Um, and I don't, is Robert on?
Yes. Robert Hewitt?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Robert, quick question. Can you tell me where we are on the road department property in regards to the property or surrounds it and, and so forth?
Um, I had a m- meeting prior to the COVID shutdown with a family member who's the legal representative of the property, um, requesting that negotiations begin considering purchasing of that triangular piece. Uh, there's been no further correspondence since that time. I did have an in-person meeting. I did send a letter, but then there's been nothing further.
Have you tried, I guess, have you tried to reach back out? And if so, where do you think we are in that? Obviously, this is a, a can that can't take too much more kicking.
Well, uh, there were two parties that we were discussing.
Correct.
Um, and so we had all the initial conversations and, and, uh, there's been no further, uh, correspondence since the COVID shutdown is the, it sort of just was put on the back burner. Uh, the, the energy project was one reason, uh, in my opinion, that, um, it was sort of set aside uh, because there was a potential of possibly relocating the facility. I know we were running a parallel course of either acquiring and reconstructing on the same site or looking for somewhere else.
Right, right. Well, I think with the energy study, I think, uh, and I don't mean this in a negative way, but I think common sense led us all to believe that, that it was, it wasn't worth the, the time and the energy or, or money. Uh, you know, that facility's in terrible shape. And again, I, I know where I'm at on it. I, I know the road, the road supervisor, he believes strongly that they can, they can stay where they're at. I guess we're just kind of in a position where we just need to, to get it figured out sooner than later. Because like I say, uh, I, I'm not sure how much more this can can take.
I, I guess one, one question that ought to be, uh, brought back to the services has, has property acquisition been budgeted for? Because.
I'm not, I'm not sure that, um, I'm not sure that, uh, about that, but I'm not sure that the property's ever been approved to be, uh, purchased. So I'm not sure that that, you know, that that's there. Um, we can, again, like I said, you haven't had contact since COVID started. So, um, but again, if we can get something done before, we're, we're gonna be going in budget tops here before too long. So, um, one way or the other, we, we need to do something for the road department.
If, if the court pleases, I'm, I'm happy to, um, uh, re-initiate conversations with both parties. The, the, they were both open to discussions, which, so that was positive. I'm, I'm happy to, to re-initiate if, if it's the will of the court.
Robert, uh, I'd like for you to, uh, uh, go ahead and, uh, and get to a point where there is a figure. Uh, there's, whether, whatever that figure is, uh, on, on both pieces of property. I believe one of them has already said that, uh, they didn't have a problem. It may be just a nominal fee, but there was a, there was, uh, uh, not exactly the amount, but just said, well, we'll be willing to work with you on whatever it was. And the other one, uh, is gonna take some, some more time. So, uh, if you would, uh, please follow up on that.
Yes, sir, I will.
Thank you Judge. Next question, and maybe, and this is for you Judge and, and for, uh, for the city manager. Would it be possible to start back up our, uh, weekly COVID-19 update calls?
Um, sure.
Is that okay?
The, we're gonna talk to Tommy Russell about that.
Make sure, I think there were some issues.
Those will constitute open meetings of the court and you'll have to treat them as such.
Okay. So can we start those back up or can we get those going again? Obviously with everything changing, I mean, it's changing rapidly. And, uh, we're, I know I'm getting asked, uh, and I'm sure I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I think everybody's probably getting asked, what are we doing or what's going on or what? You know, just, just peace of mind more than anything.
All right, uh, Tommy, I'll, I'll talk, I'm gonna write down, talk with you about, uh, whether it's you, it may not be you, but could the, uh, Ray or Mark or somebody lead that conversation with the court?
So are we gonna schedule those? Cause those will have to be according to the county attorney, special meetings.
Right.
What, what about an email? Just, what about an email? I mean, just some sort of correspondence letting us, giving us an update?
All right. Once again, I said, you, you know, this is new, so while.
Right.
I'll talk with Tommy. We'll see, see if we can't work out something, have somebody, uh, from emergency management send out. Uh, or, or maybe even the Health Department.
Yes, sir.
Information too.
Okay.
But you do know that on Mondays at 1, now you may not be able to watch it. We are, we are broadcasting every Monday at 1, an overview of, of, uh, the weekend and all of that. So people are seeing, are watching that part. But if you're, for your information, if that's what you're talking about, then we.
Right.
We'll, uh.
Okay.
We'll work on something, okay?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Squire Sebastian?
Uh, yes, thank you Judge. I just wanted to go back and see if our road superintendent was available now. If it's resolved, whatever communication issues there may have been, uh, to talk about the, uh, the compounding potential loss of road fund dollars over the period.
John Mitchell? Andrew, do you see John Mitchell?
He's on here. He has unmuted.
John Mitchell?
The telephone number. I don't know if he tried to call in. I don't think so.
And I talked to him earlier. He was having issues with his microphone.
Is he in his office or at his home?
I did not ask.
Okay.
He's on here and he has unmuted.
The, I guess the thing is, if, if, if John's unable to, to get with us tonight, if he could just follow up with the court and just give us some information about that, I think that helps strengthen the case of what we're trying to do with the resolution.
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Let's go to, uh, uh, constitutional offices. Any constitutional offices? Uh, um, go ahead, uh, Mr. Blackburn or Squire Blackburn?
Yes, the, uh, comprehensive plan steering committee met last night and, uh, discussed a myriad of things. And we've started the process of writing an RFP for a consultant to help with the, uh, writing of the comp plan. And, uh, Mr. Hewitt, um, with the county and Mr. Cochley with the city, um, are gonna have their hands pretty full with, uh, with a lot of the requests that, that are gonna be in there. But I think, uh, we're moving in the right direction and, uh,
moving in the right direction and, uh, and I'll continue to keep everybody updated. And I'm sure Robert could add to it as well, uh, moving forward.
Thank you, Squire Blackburn. Thank you for attending the meeting and you're going to have your hands full too. Okay. Any other constitutional offices? Okay. Squire, I mean, uh, Councilor Sparks?
Judge, I've, I've alluded to it on the last couple of meetings and even discussions, I guess with other members of the court. Uh, I wanted to expand some on, um, some changes that we've had to suffer through over in the judicial center and the operations of the, uh, courts of justice. As you all may or may not have known, last week, effective November 30th, the Kentucky Supreme Court issued another order as to the practice of law and the Commonwealth going through about the end of February or the end of January, putting us in a similar posture as we were, uh, starting in June with severely restricted in-person courts. Um, as of Monday, the, uh, courts in red zone or red, red counties, much as Frankfurt, um, has gone 100% remote on all court appearances, motions, hearings, et cetera. That may or may not result in some confusion with people when they come down to the courthouse to do their business. So I was wanting to just ask for everybody's patience if they, they come down to the county attorney's office specifically, uh, interactions with the, uh, bailiff station. Uh, we've tried to put out forms and documents out at the front of the entry to the courthouse, um, for complaints, for filing proof, for information to get up with Ms. Feldman's office as to how to pay cost, et cetera. And to do those things remotely, they facilitated by allowing, uh, court cost filing fees payments to be done electronically. Uh, I've circulated this morning, another series of, of emails to the sheriff's office, KSP, uh, city police and, uh, K, K state police, uh, instructions on how, when they interact with, uh, citizens issuing summonses, uh, traffic citations, et cetera, to, uh, also distribute the clerk's information email. So people can email the clerk to get the Zoom link. We're doing it 100% by Zoom. And that way they can make their appearances. Uh, it worked out pretty good. I monitored it today and I participated in on Tuesday and, um, except for a very crowded Zoom, Zoom screen. Everybody seemed to get their business taken care of. We've also asked for, uh, for folks' understanding, please do everything they can to, I guess as always to, to avoid the popo, uh, to the extent that you can. But, um, if there are proof issues, et cetera, they do get cited. You know, it, it, it happens. Tickets happen, et cetera. Uh, we will still be continuing to take proof to the extent possible to try to keep people from crowding down here at the courthouse. Um, but you're going to see some changes probably in the next two or three months. We've been really lucky here in Franklin County that beginning in Jan, in, pardon me, in March, and then evolving into June and then October, we've managed to, to continue the, uh, courthouse flow of business. So it was not unusual. We didn't really go back to in-person hearings like a lot of counties did. We've been doing a mixture of, of Zoom, uh, court hearings, uh, as well as some cases individually came in and, and we already had the infrastructure in place to continue with that. But I just wanted to let everybody know that we'll be continuing that, that evolution. Um, it, it's one that was forced upon us bec- for, because of COVID, but frankly, it's one that I predicted when the courthouse got built off. And so we didn't need seven courtrooms anyway. We just need some blindingly fast wifi and cable because this was how we'd be practicing in 10 years. And lo and behold, here we are. Um, if there are any questions of officers or individuals about their court dates, court hearings, or if you all get any questions with your constituents, please have them call me here at the office. It's 875-8745. My staff will be glad to assist with, uh, emailing documents if we have them, emailing contacts, et cetera, so we can keep providing services and court access to the people of Franklin County. So just wanted to catch up to what we've been trying to do as this thing progresses to keep, keep doling out justice hot and fresh.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mr. Attorney. Thank you very much for the
Thank you, sir.
Um, let's, let's move to, uh, departmental reports. Um, Robert, I'm going to ask if you'll give us an update on the, uh, Simon House, yeah, or AKA the old health department building.
Thank you, Judge. The contract has been executed by both parties. So the project is officially underway. Hey, uh, Mr. Tippett, if you wouldn't mind, put up the schematic for plan that, that's our most recent submitter for the court to review. I'd like to cover just a couple of things on that. I'll try to make this brief. So what we're seeing at the top of the screen is the, is, uh, the upper floor plan or the second floor plan. So we've got, uh, upper left of the, of the image that we see, we've got a shower in what was an existing office and then a laundry room just on the other side of the wall. Um, that's tucked in there nicely. So that allows for the same width of the main corridor as well as some changing area outside of the shower. Um, there is just to the bottom left of that, a possible second entrance that you see as a means of egress, um, in the event that that's necessary through the code review. Um, in the existing corridor at the top middle of, of that, uh, if you can see, there's a call out, uh, referring to an accessible sidewalk, uh, as another possible second means of egress outside of the building. There is some stormwater drains issues that would need to be taken care of. But we just want to make sure that the, the facility is, is accessible, um, uh, to, to all individuals and, and meets code compliance for evacuation purposes. To the right at the end of the corridor, there's a new secure door that's been bubbled just next to the reception area. That is to allow both fire separation from the office space to the right and the living quarters to the left. And then, uh, to the far right in the office space or they're proposing a new, uh, handicap accessible restroom facility there, um, uh, for office staff and visitors to the location. So that, that currently is the, is the, uh, the, the layout to the upper floor or second floor. On the lower floor, um, some, some minor changes. We are showing a, a new possible, uh, second egress from more of a dormitory style shelter facility, sleeping facility. Um, and so this would be a, uh, an excavated area at the location of an existing window that would allow sidewalk access directly to the existing, um, uh, parking area in front of the double doors. Uh, there's a new shower facility, um, just in upper right of that shelter area for those individuals in the dormitory. And then there is also a laundry area, uh, accessible through the vestibule, uh, just past the, the main entry on that lower level. And so those are the, the changes that have been discussed, uh, both with, uh, county staff, myself. Um, I've, I've involved Jeremy Colston with the maintenance department as well. And then also, um, individuals from, from the Simon House, including John Martin and his staff. And it appears that, that everyone's all in agreement that, that this is adequate. This is being proposed as a two-phased, uh, renovation. Phase one involves simply getting the office space usable. Uh, as you all know, there was a, a lease issue with their current location. So we'll do a phase one renovation for office and then phase two involves, um, you know, shower facilities and sleeping quarters and, and other egress issues relating to the residential portion of this. Um, the, uh, one of the main things that the architect is working on is code review, you know? Um, you know, which of the two possible second egress, uh, exits would be necessary on the second floor plan? Um, you know, does the firewall separating the living quarters and the office space, is it in compliance? Does any of the dormitory shelter space need to be sprinkled? So, so that, that process is ongoing, but it, at least there's a, a layout that we can work from. Uh, I have provided the architect with a set of floor plans prepared by an architect from a previous renovation the county did to this facility back in 2001. At this time, I am in the process of actively searching for the remaining plan set, which would include the plumbing, HVAC, AC and electrical systems. Um, if I can provide those to our architect, then that will expedite this process ex- extremely. If I can't locate it, it's going to really slow things down and it could potentially add to the cost. So I will work diligently in the basement and pouring through my office and anywhere else. I think plans might be tucked away to see if I can't find those drawings. So with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer questions.
All right. Let's start with Squire Tracy.
Robert, one, just one quick question. It caught my ear. So is it accurate to say there's going to be more than office space upstairs?
Yes, sir. There are three, uh, bedrooms proposed upstairs as well as a, a, an eating area.
Okay. I guess I missed that during the presentation. Okay. Thank you.
That the separation is for the families on the upper level and individuals on the lower level.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Squire, uh, Blackburn?
Uh, yes, Robert. Is, is there any way, um, we could get a, a copy of that, uh, for the court, that blueprint? And I, I had some, some members in the community asked if, if it wasn't very clear on our meeting, uh, format and they, they weren't able to see it very well. So I had some people in the community wanting to see that as well. Um, but if you could share that with me, I'd appreciate it.
Well, yes, sir. Is this the image you would like? The, the
Yes, sir.
B? Okay.
Yes, sir. That's all I need.
Be happy to.
Thank you.
Squire Muller?
Thank you, Judge, and I thank you, Robert, for being on here tonight. Quick question. You know, after, um, I guess last month, there was that horrific tragedy at Soup Kitchen. What are they proposing for security, especially in the upstairs where there are bedrooms with offices?
Uh, well, we, uh, I would refer back to that, uh, security door at the far right of the corridor that separates the residential from the office space. That is there so that there is no mixing between the public slash office area and the residence. Um, once again, I, it's important that I locate structural plans and any electrical plans I can find so that, um, if there's any, you know, any chases or runs that the architect could use to, you know, provide mag locks or anything like that, um, then, then, um, he'll definitely explore that, that option. I believe that's likely the, the route he would take. Um, that way you could document who's coming and going, uh, from that door if anyone at all. So, um, otherwise, you know, this would ultimately end up being basically a 24-hour facility because there would be, you know, individuals staying there overnight.
So we will be able to, you know, kind of like, uh, the schools did, uh, you know, a year or two ago, maybe look for some grants for security as far as people coming in and out of the facility, you know, as far as knives, guns, things like that. Will any of that be proposed?
Well, that's a good question. Um,
Well, the Simon Houses, they are already looking at grants, uh, for several things, but I don't, I don't know exactly what, what they're, what they're pursuing, but as part of their, uh, presentation and saying that they wanted, why they wanted this building, they would, they were going to pursue grants. Now I'm not sure exactly what that was, what they were. But I'm sure security is foremost on, on their, on their mind, especially after the soup kitchen, even though that was outside.
Robert, if you could maybe just kind of throw that back out to G. Scotts and Associates just to, so it's on their radar. You know, I think it'd be in everybody's best interest.
I'd be very happy to. It's a good point.
Okay.
Robert, before we move to Squire Sebastian, uh, make sure that you check with, uh, the health department on those plans too. Cause if we don't have them, I would think for sure the health department would have those plans.
That's a great idea. I will check with him as well.
Thank you. Squire Sebastian?
Thank you, Judge. There's no further need for my question. It's been asked. Thank you.
Okay, dope. All right. Uh, any other updates? Committee updates? Anybody else? Anything else? Squire Muller? Can't hear you, Squire.
All right. Let's try it again. So, uh, last week, uh, we had a solid waste update, but I think Brittany kind of brought everybody up to speed as far as that. Um, just wanted to see if, I think there was a couple of people who talked about strategic planning. I was wondering if we could maybe, uh, plan a strategic planning meeting. Also, I would love to request a park planning meeting also. Had some people from the community kind of asking about some different things. So I think it'd be good to talk.
Okay. Parks and strategic playing. Tamara, you got that? Okay. I'm not sure that we're going to be able to get it before Christmas, but we'll try.
Judge Wells, it's Robert Hewitt.
Yes, sir.
Could I update the court on the energy project?
Yes, absolutely, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. So, um, I've been working with ESG as well as, uh, uh, employees at the jail. Uh, we have reviewed and approved the following submittals, uh, that'd be for lighting, roofing, uh, and water conservation and fixtures. We are still pending on HVAC submittals and any electrical. We have a progress meeting scheduled for December the 9th at 10 a.m.
Okay. Thank you, Robert. Thank you for that update. Uh, before we move into the, uh, voting session, uh, and this kind of going to lead right into, uh, the pledge of allegiance. Andrew, this is, I haven't talked with you about this, but this, I want you to post, and I'll say this to the magistrates, if you, uh, want to contact anybody, especially young children, uh, kids that are in school, I'd like for young children to help lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So Andrew, on our Facebook page, our webpage, I would like to post, um, the, uh, idea of a young child or children or a family, uh, to video the pledge of allegiance and send that to us, uh, with their names. And we will use their pledge of allegiance to, to, uh, lead our pledge as we, uh, start our voting session. So Andrew, let me, uh, keep me updated on that. Squires, you all send that out too, as part of your, uh, post and, uh, and we, any video that we can get of children, uh, given the pledge of allegiance, I think that would be great and helpful for our community. And make sure that also that we get their names so we can recognize them. With that being said, uh, let's now move to the voting session. And, uh, clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Squire Sebastian?
Here.
Squire Blackburn? Squire Muller? Squire Tracy?
Here.
Squire Booth?
Here.
Squire Moore?
Here.
Judge Wells?
Here. And speaking of pledge of allegiance, uh, let's stand for the pledge and Squire Moore, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance again?
Let me reconfigure this so you can see my flag.
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, Squire Moore and Squire Booth for your
Reverb.
Pledge in there. Thank you. Okay. Uh, first item on the agenda is authorization for approval of minutes from our regular meeting of November 12th, 2020.
So moved.
By Squire Blackburn, seconded by Squire Muller. Discussion, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes. Next item is authorization to prove a resolution in support of addressing the modernization of Kentucky's transportation funding mechanisms to address transportation funding needs throughout the Commonwealth.
So moved.
Moved by Squire Tracy? Seconded by Squire Muller. Discussion, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Um, I'll vote yes on this and, uh, certainly would think that information from our road superintendent to demonstrate the, uh, amount of funds that we have lost over the period of time that we've listed five years, I think would go quite a long way to showing the impact that it's having specifically here in Franklin County, the miles of road we can't pave for our residents and the bridges that we can't maintain for our residents. So I think that's a key thing to note. Thank you.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, and Andrew, uh, if you would, tomorrow, get with John Mitchell, because this is like the second meeting that we've met with, where we've asked John to speak, and he is, and there's something wrong with his audio, so please get with John and see that that gets cleared up, help him out with that. The next item on the agenda is authorization to prove a resolution providing for additional leave to the Families First Coronavirus Response Act for all county employees effective with the pay period beginning November 30th, 2020, and ending December 31st, 2020.
So moved.
Squire Moore, seconded by Squire Booth, discussion, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
I'd like to take the opportunity to thank all the uh, all the employees of Franklin County. I know they're going through some tough times right now, but uh I'm also excited to sit down hopefully next week with the court and talk about maybe a voucher program or something like that for the citizens of Franklin County and some of the small businesses that hopefully we can help with the CARES Act money also, yes.
Squire Tracy?
Um, the county uh HR director indicated to us tonight that 12 county employees have used this service over the last eight months or so, and that they have uh turned in and are shown proper uh proper documentation in regards to the virus. Uh, if this additional leave time uh related to COVID can help uh county employees and ease the burden, uh, I'm for it, I vote yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes. Next item is the first reading of an Amendment Number Two to Ordinance Number Two, 2020, relating to budget for the fiscal year 2020, 2021, and that vote will be all on December the 18th. The next item is authorization to receive the Treasures Report.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Squire Muller, he was first. Discussion, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes. Next item is payment of claims. Is there a motion to deny any claims?
Judge, I have no motion, but I will follow up with uh Jay LaVontae, as you recommended. Thank you.
While we were talking, I did uh get looked up something, and there is a line in his budget, jail budget for lenient, so uh that is part of his budget, Squire Sebastian. Now, you can, he can respond about whether that's commissary or not. Okay, uh, seeing no uh denial of claims, that the record reflect the bills are ordered to be paid. And the last item on the agenda is authorization to adjourn.
So moved.
Squire Booth, okay, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, and with that being said, uh, please, everybody, wear your mask, mask up, let's all be safe. Keep the community safe, think about others as well. Be safe, everybody, wear your mask.
Thank you, I'll be careful, stay safe.